It is nearly impossible to turn on the TV, get on social media, or just go to the grocery store without hearing or seeing the impact of the coronavirus.
It is a virus that is still new, and so new that we won't really know at this point what the lasting impacts are.
There's a lot of scary info floating Iran out there, and that's why we at 12 News are pushing facts and not feeding fears. Over the next hour, we will be answering your questions, and we know you have a whole lot of them. So we have some experts here in studio. They are ready to tackle the issues that are important to all of you out there, from our mayor to county judges, doctors, and medical experts. We're ready to answer any and every question tonight, and we're doing our very best to practice social distancing here in the studio.
We are spread out as far as we can get. Right now, we want to let you know you can text your questions to 409-838-1212. We're going to try to get to as many of them over the next hour. We do want to let you know we don't have folks answering the phones, so we need you to text your questions, 409-838-1212. Message and data rates do apply.
All right, good info there. And before we get to our experts, we want to get you caught up on some of today's top headlines.
There are three things to know right now. Number one, Texas Governor Greg Abbott confirms there are 57 cases of the coronavirus across 15 Texas counties. Number two, Louisiana has closed all restaurants, bars, and casinos to slow the spread. And number three, President Trump making a plea that we avoid gatherings of more than 10 people. He also wants us to cancel unnecessary travel to slow down the outbreak.
Now, Jordan, something else that people really need to pay close attention to is the impact that this virus is having on our area schools. We do want you to pack your patience because this information is changing by the hour, and we know you have questions.
Yeah, a lot has changed since we saw you at 5:00. Paris Kane is live in Beaumont. Paris, what do you know at this point?
Jordan, the school districts have been monitoring the situation to decide the best way to proceed. In fact, several of them met today with county officials to come up with a game plan. And we're just now getting new information, just within this past half hour, on how they plan to proceed. In fact, Nederland ISD schools will be closed until March 23rd. District leadership and staff are working on a flexible educational program to keep students engaged and provide instructional support for all students. The child nutrition staff is also working on a plan to deliver breakfast and lunch for students. The plans will be announced in the coming days. Port Arthur ISD is also closing campuses until further notice. The district is asking parents and students to obtain coursework from district and campus websites. Little Cypress-Merisburg Consolidated ISD is implementing a flexible education program until April 3rd. The program includes a blended instructional approach with online and paper and pencil learning tasks. The plans vary by grade levels, and your child's teacher will be sending them out. The district also anticipates being able to deliver breakfast and lunch by district transportation. Port N.H.S. Groves ISD is planning on providing extended learning instruction until April 3rd. And school officials with Harden and Jasper County have also confirmed that they will be canceling classes countywide until April 3rd. And again, we are getting these updates as we go on the night. We plan to keep updating you as we learn new information. You can always check our website. We're going to be updating it throughout the night. For now, live in Beaumont, Paris Kane, 12 News.
And that is a good reminder, as Paris said, to check our website. Right now, we want to bring in the experts. We're joined tonight Jefferson County Judge Jeff Brannick. Also, Beaumont Mayor Becky Ames is with us.
We also have Sheri Almer, the Director of Beaumont Public Health, and Dr. Gary Many, the Chief Medical Officer at the Medical Center of Southeast Texas. Thank you all so much for being here this afternoon.
Really appreciate your time.
For sure, and this is something that I think so many people are asking about, top of the mind, testing. People want to know about testing. How does testing work? Who's being tested? Who has access to testing?
Okay, so we have a set of criteria that people have to meet to get tested. So if they are in the hospital, or if they are at their doctor's office, the healthcare providers are gathering that information. We are asking that doctors do consider other diagnoses like flu, because we are in flu season right now, and strep throat. So if the patient tests negative for those two things, the hospital will call us, the healthcare provider will also call us. We will work with them at the health department to determine, yes, this person meets criteria. So then the health department notifies the state for acceptance of that specimen. The specimen is collected here with available specimen collection kits that we do have here in Beaumont. Those specimens are then sent to the Houston lab for testing.
Sheri, we're going to kind of work more and delve into that process in just a second. I do want to share what the governor has said about this. The Governor Abbott saying, as of Monday afternoon, just under 300 Texans had been tested for the coronavirus. He said the state has the ability to test 270 people a day, a number that is expected to grow into the thousands. And the question about that is really when? Texas public health labs have the capacity, again, to treat 273 a day. So give us a little more perspective on this, if you will. Mayor, I know you and I were speaking. People keep asking, what's going on here? Do we have, are we ever going to get a drive-through testing facility here? What's the status of that?
Well, a drive-through testing facility is not the same as a lab. I think where the confusion is coming in, I mean, there could be a drive-through testing facility at some point. We don't have that yet. But even if there is, that's not going to change the process. The process will still be that, as Ms. Almer said, it has to go to a lab to be tested. So even if we had one here, someone's, I keep getting asked, why don't we get one of those facilities here? So it would be quicker for us. It would not make one bit of difference. Even if you lived in a city where those facilities are and where it's being tested, you can't drive there and be tested there, and they say you have the coronavirus, or you don't. What it basically is, is just to say, this is where everyone's test goes. And just because you live in Houston, or you live in Beaumont, and it's in Houston, doesn't mean the Houston person's going to go in front of the Beaumont person. Regardless of where you get tested, it's going to be the same. Go ahead, Dr. Many, please.
The important point is, when we have these drive-through centers, people think, I'm going to drive in, they're going to swab me, they're going to put in the thing, and they're going to tell me right then, I have it or I don't. And it doesn't work that way. So they're still going to have to collect that information. They're still going to have to ask you questions. There's still a criteria that has to go through. That swab would then, like we were talking about, be sent off. So they're going to have to have your information, right? So we can track you down and give you those results. So it's not, you go in, I swab you, and two minutes later, here's your result. It's not going to work that way.
Even with the drive-through, it wouldn't.
Sounds like the biggest takeaway is, no matter where you are tested, it still takes time to get those results.
Right, and they have to go to certain labs to be processed.
All right, good information right there. We want to jump into a question from Anna, who's out of Beaumont. You can tell that's a pretty long one, so let's break this one up a little bit. First things first, she wants to know, what's our local testing capacity?
So our local, I would be probably hospital by hospital. So I don't know how many kits every hospital has. We have kits available at our facility through Stewart Healthcare at the Medical Center of Southeast Texas. They've now, Quest and LabCorp are now starting doing testing.
Except today.
So physicians are now able to order those test kits at their office. I don't know which physicians in the community have it, which ones don't. But if you think you have those symptoms, the best thing first to do is call your physician. Just don't show up at the office. Because if you do, they can work you in based on a schedule, right? We can get other people out of the office, have you come in when everybody's out. So we're minimizing exposure of other patients and other staff, right? By doing that.
Dr. Many, would you repeat those symptoms again? Because I don't know that that was...
Basically, the symptoms we're looking at right now is going to be fever, cough, sore throat. And the big thing is, they're usually shortness of breath, okay? A little bit different than sometimes with the flu. A lot of people with influenza, you get sick, you have the body aches, all that. But you're not short of breath. So those are sort of the criteria we're going through at this point.
Okay, so let's pick back up with Anna, because we're starting to see a lot of major cities around us. You have Houston, you have Dallas, you have Austin, who are starting to implement these policies for bars, restaurants, entertainment. And she wants to know, are we waiting for people to start testing positive before the city and county adopt more targeted social distancing practices?
Well, I can speak for the city, and the judge can speak for the county, but we put a declaration in through today that closed many of our facilities beginning tomorrow. As far as the private facilities, whether it be bars, restaurants, or whether it be private venues, ours is in line with the county at this point, where we are recommending certain things that they do, but it's not mandated yet. I'm not going to say it never will be. Like I said, this is totally evolving. But right now, that's not included in ours. But I would say to people, especially those elderly people, or if you have a compromised condition, that you don't go to places that have a lot of people. And we might start seeing some of this with the restaurants and bars doing it on their own, like some of the fast food places we were talking about before we started have already done drive-throughs. So some of them are implementing this theirself, and that's what we would prefer that they do. We don't want to mandate private business if we don't have to, but if we do have to, we will.
And that's where we might turn. Guys, we have to take a quick break right now. Dr., we'll visit more in just a second. Time flies, but we want you to text our questions, your questions, to 409-838-1212. We're going to take a quick break and be back with our 12 News Town Hall.
We want to welcome you back to Facts Not Fear, a 12 News Town Hall on the coronavirus. And we're answering your questions tonight.
We have a team of local medical experts in the studio with us tonight to arm you with information and facts. We want you to join the conversation. We'd love you to share your questions with us. We know you've got a lot of them. 409-838-1212, that is the number to text your questions. I want to bring in 12 News anchor Kelsey Johnson. She's following the conversation. Kelsey, what are you hearing online at this point?
Well, guys, we're getting a lot of questions about schools. You can see some of those right there. People are hearing about Louisiana canceling school across the state for a month. Some in Texas are extending spring break. Others are going to online learning. So Mateo in Beaumont has a question for you, Mayor Ames. Has there been talk about BISD or other districts extending spring break or going to online learning?
I did talk to Dr. Allen today. Today is their first day of spring break, and they were, she was actually on a conference call when I talked to her. So they are considering it, but a decision has not been made yet. And that would be up to the school district.
All right, so we do have a couple of follow-up questions, of course. Schools being closed, it just impacts so many other things, like this domino effect. So if a district hasn't canceled school yet, what would you advise parents to do? Should they be keeping their kids home?
Well, at BISD, they're still on spring break this whole week.
So they have a little more of a window.
Yeah, so I think that's what they're doing, is they're trying to make sure they have everything covered before they make an announcement, is what I get out of our conversation. So, you know, just because you haven't heard anything today, that doesn't mean something's not coming in the next couple or three days.
And Judge, I know you were at a major meeting with a lot of superintendents today, right?
Yeah, the county judges, Newton, Jasper, Harden, Orange, Jefferson counties, were all together today, Tyler County, with 37 school superintendents. And there was general agreement among all of them about going to flexible schedules and flexible learning opportunities that did not include all the students coming together. I need to interject my apologies to those students of the Beaumont Independent School District that began spring break. But just about an hour ago, I entered a second amended disaster declaration emergency order. That order has a 24-hour curfew for anyone under the age of 18 who is not in the custody of their parents or a legal guardian, which means that one of the concerns that the superintendents had, as well as the mayors, was that with these kids being out of school, that they'll be congregating together in parks and in other areas, and they did not want to see that happen. And so...
I suppose this is one of those scenarios where it's not about punishing the kids, but just really trying to stop the spread of this.
Which goes back to that whole social distance thing, right? We should all be practicing it anyways. It shouldn't have to come from the governor, or the mayor, or the county judge to say, try and social distance yourself, right? We should start practicing that habit at this point, because that's what's going to slow the spread, is being distant instead of in big groups.
Got it. And Judge Brannick, I kind of want to go back to you. We want to talk about the infrastructure for online classes. When you talk about students not being in that physical schoolhouse, laptops, access to the internet, do we think this is something that the districts will be able to pull off?
I think that those that have online learning capabilities will, those that are in the more populated areas. I know that some of the school superintendents in the more rural areas said that only about 20% of their students had access to internet. And so some of their plans in those districts are to provide materials to be picked up and done at home by the parents. And they'll have variable schedules for their teachers to get in and get those materials prepared and distributed, and then grade them, and try to continue that way. I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of different plans among the school districts, but I know that all of them reach consensus about keeping the children out of large gatherings.
Absolutely.
So the Mid-County, I think, their spring break was last week, right? And that's what the difference with Beaumont is, is that Beaumont is this week. And so that's why they haven't made a decision, because Beaumont hasn't given you a decision either, right?
They have not.
Okay, guys, we have a...
I just make sure I'm not misspeaking.
I think we're all on point at this point. We have a lot more of your questions coming up. Continue texting them to 409-838-1212. We're back in just two minutes. All right, we welcome you back to our 12 News Town Hall, Facts Not Fear, as we confront this coronavirus crisis. Let's get straight to your questions. Millie in Winnie sent in this question. Wants to know how the coronavirus spreads. Doctor, you or Sheri want to take that?
So obviously, it spreads person to person, correct? Which is, first and foremost, wash your hands, right? Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands. And the best and simplest way is just hot water and soap for 20 seconds. And if you don't have hot water and soap, then those Germex-type products. And constantly be washing your hands. Constantly be wiping down surfaces that you're touching. I mean, your iPhone is probably one of the dirtiest things, or your Android that we carry around. Your channel changer, your doorknob. So it's spread by aerosol, meaning sneezing, coughing. So the best thing is, social distancing, like we're talking about. Staying out of big crowds, staying out of, you know, large confined areas. And wash your hands.
And Dr. Many, I want to follow up with that one. I know a lot of ladies out there like me have a boatload of the smell-good stuff in our cabinets. And we're saying, that's probably not going to get the job done this time, because it doesn't contain a lot of alcohol.
No, so alcohol-based, those Germex things. But again, still, the best thing, soap and water, soap and hot water.
That's right. Let me just add too, that we have read that the virus can stay alive on surfaces for about three hours. So what the CDC has posted is a list of those over-the-counter cleaners, Clorox, Lysol, 409, anything that's antibacterial, antiviral. Clean surfaces. Wash your hands, clean surfaces. That's extremely important.
Okay, and to be clear, you said three hours? Because I thought I'd read up to three days.
No, three hours. That's changed. We heard three days, so things change frequently.
You heard it first here on 12 News. Sheri, we thank you for that.
That's how fluid everything is. Because when I Googled it on Saturday, it said 36 hours.
Three hours is the most recent.
Which again, goes to what we're telling you now, eight hours from now? It could be a whole different scenario, a whole different set of guidelines coming out of the CDC.
Which is why we have so much to continue to discuss. Really quickly, we're going to take a break. And on the other side of that break, we will continue answering all of your questions surrounding the coronavirus. Welcome back to Facts Not Fear, a 12 News Town Hall on the coronavirus. We've been talking a lot about your physical health, but your mental health is just as important right now.
We are joined right now by Heather Champion from Spindletop. She's here, as well as Dr. Gary Many, the Chief Medical Officer from the Medical Center of Southeast Texas. I'll start with you, Heather. We talked a bit last week when you and I first chatted about this. But over the weekend, I feel like we turned it up a notch. Now we're hearing, stay away from crowds more than 10 people. So social distancing and the effects of that are a thing. Talk a little about what you think people should be most concerned about.
Probably the thing that people need to keep in mind is that as you start to think about these social distancing factors and think about all this stuff, it's constantly on your mind. You're being bombarded with it. You're being bombarded in social media, from the news, from a lot of different sources. So try to limit your intake to a certain extent, as much as you can. Be mindful, be proactive, follow instructions of your experts. But also, take the time to limit, take some breaks from social media.
Okay, and I think that is very important, no matter where you're standing. You can still connect, though, even if you're not watching the news all of the time or scrolling social media. There are ways for you to stay connected to other people.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. There are video games that kids play where they go online and they connect with their friends, and play with their friends from all over the country and the world. There are other opportunities. You can use technology in ways that we've never had the capability to use before. We have a lot of these FaceTime, and we have other capabilities. There are cell phones and other different technology pieces that you have in your home these days. So use those, check on your family and friends, check on your neighbors. Use that as a distraction, and share the facts instead of some of the fears.
That's right. And, Doctor, what about helping our kids get through this? What would you... What would you advise parents do to sort of ease this transition? I mean, many are going to be home from school potentially for weeks.
Exactly. So some of that is again, like what Heather was saying, right? Like my two boys, they play video games. So they're inner, it's different than when I was growing up. They're socially connected through their games. They can talk, they, they're online, they're communicating. So I would, you know, obviously, I think with what the judge said, where there's going to be sort of this 24 hour curfew, although I'm not big on letting people game all day long, this might be one of those things where you might want to let them so they don't feel isolated. They're still connected to their friends from school. They still can do things.
Some normalcy.
Right. They can still do homework if they're doing online homework and have chat groups to do homework. My bigger concern probably going to be more for the elderly, you know, as they sort of get limited and more isolated in. So if your parents have that capability, again, staying connected with them. There's FaceTime, so they can, you know, you can physically see people in this day and age with the technology we have with our smartphones.
Definitely things to keep at the top of our minds. And we have a lot more of your questions coming up, including concerns and questions about local schools and how they're dealing with the pandemic.
Continue texting those questions, 409-838-1212. And welcome back to Facts Not Fear, a 12 News Town Hall. We're answering your questions about the coronavirus.
We are broadcasting on both KBMT, ABC, and KJAC NBC, as well as online, on our app, and on social media platforms. Want to make sure everyone has access to this info. This is a virus where there are many more questions than answers right now, but we want to do our best in easing your minds and arming you with the facts. So you can text 409-838-1212 and we will try to get as many of your questions answered as possible. We do not have people answering the phone, so please make sure you are texting and not calling. A little reminder, message and data rates do apply.
All right, we have experts here in the studio with us, ready to tackle the issues that are important to you, from mayors to county judges, doctors, and medical experts. Thank you again for being with us for the entire hour here on 12 News.
Okay, so Mayor Ames, one of the things that people have been working on, dealing with the economic hardship this virus could cause, including possibly being out of work. So Sonny in Beaumont wants to know, if he's without work for several days, even weeks, what resources may be made available to him?
Just like everything else that we've been talking about, this is all evolving. So we don't have exact information yet, but I will, Tim Oknichek, our Emergency Management Coordinator is here with me. And one of the things that we do have on our website, on the Emergency Management page, is how small businesses and nonprofits can go on and fill some information out. So why don't you tell them how to get to that, if you don't mind?
The city webpage, beaumonttexas.gov, on the Emergency Management link, has posted for economic injury, there's a form that can be submitted through the county. Those will be collected by the state in the hopes of the governor getting an SBA declaration where there'll be some relief.
Judge, you look like you were about ready to say something as well. And this goes through the county, this process, or it can?
It can through us to either TM or Department of State Health Services, more likely, Texas Division of Emergency Management, and then on up to FEMA, or if they're going to be administering the funds. The problem that we have is that many members of Congress had not had the opportunity to read the full bill before it was passed. And so we're just getting the opportunity to see it and have not had an opportunity because of our schedules to digest it yet.
You worried about what's going to happen with restaurants?
Well, any, if you look at it, just about everyone's affected in one way or another, even industry. I mean, it's not going to be just restaurants. So, but again, please go to the Emergency Management page of the City of Beaumont and fill that out. We are unclear exactly what will be coming down, just like, like we said, everything's been evolving, but we really do need people through either the county or through our website at the city to fill this out, because that's what we're going to depend on in the future for, for help, for our citizens and for our businesses and nonprofits.
Let's talk risk factors right now, kind of want to pivot. We have a question from Daniel in Lumberton that's coming in. He says he is still confused about who is most vulnerable when it comes to the coronavirus, who is most at risk with truly getting sick. Dr. Minnie, your thoughts on that?
So, risk factors are going to be obviously age, 65 and above. If you have heart disease, heart conditions, right? Already respiratory things like COPD or emphysema, kidney disease, so anyone that's sort of immunocompromised people, like you have some sort of other problem, diabetes that lowers your immune capabilities, you are going to be more vulnerable at getting this virus. We know kids are getting it, they just don't seem to manifest the symptoms like adults. They're carriers though, right? So they get it, they're not getting as sick as adults are, they may not even know they have it, they carry it, they go home, they give it to grandma, grandpa, you know? That's sort of some of this, what we're talking about with the school closures as well, when people like, why kids aren't getting it, why are we closing schools? That's one of the reasons why we're closing schools.
And that's something we've been seeing in the headlines, a lot of the high profile cases. We just saw Idris Elba, an actor today, say, "I tested positive, but I'm feeling fine." And that's what you really have to worry about, because you come into contact with so many people.
Right. And again, you might get it and feel great or feel a little crummy. I come in contact with it and I get it from you and I do terrible.
That's why we want to get to...
We're all different.
This next question kind of hits on that, Dr. Minnie, because Darnell says, he's a diabetic, he's 38 years old, but has a young son who's been around a lot of kids. You know, those kids are coughing, they're sneezing on each other. How worried should he be about getting the coronavirus? And if he does get it, how should he manage it?
So, obviously he's immunocompromised in a sense, because he has diabetes. If he has those symptoms we talked about earlier, right? Fever or low grade fever, cough, sore throat, difficulty breathing, that's a person that wants to get tested, right? You're going to call your doctor. If your doctor's doing that test, they can do it. If they don't, then obviously you may have to go to one of the, one of the local hospitals. Once you're diagnosed, then the treatment is going to be based on how severe your symptoms are. It can be as simple as you're going to treat it sort of like the flu in a sense, you don't have the bad respiratory stuff and you're going to be quarantined. It can be as bad as to where you're in the hospital and you end up on a ventilator.
I want to highlight, Dr. Minnie talked about individual susceptibility, because there's, right now, a 46-year-old SWAT officer in Conroe that is in very good condition and health, got it, he's in very poor condition at the hospital now. So generally applies to people over 65 and who are immunocompromised, but there are other people that are in good health that can also be significantly impacted.
Which is a perfect point. We're all different. So, you know, you do great, I do awful.
Doctor, thank you, and thank you, the rest of you. Want to bring back in 12 News anchor, Kelsey Johnson, right now. She is with us, monitoring some of the questions and what you're saying on social media.
Daisy and Jordan, right now, we are going through questions being sent into our Facebook page, as well as questions that you guys are texting in. And Judge Branick, we've got a few questions for you about your disaster declaration. A lot of people are wanting to know, why was the South Texas State Fair canceled and not the Nederland Heritage Festival?
Judge?
Yeah. Under Chapter 418 of the Texas Government Code, the mayors are the emergency management directors within their cities, the county judge is the emergency management director within the county. I always try, the, the government code does say in the event there is a disagreement between the mayors and the county judge, the county judge's decision will overrule the mayor's decision. I always try to give my mayors great deference, since it's their city. And in that case, I made the decision for the county, because it was a county facility with regard to the South Texas State Fair. I wanted to give the Nederland mayor the opportunity to craft his own emergency orders, as I was waiting for Mayor Ames' orders also. And so I did not make my emergency order effective until Monday today at noon.
All right. Judge, thank you for, thank you for addressing that. As Kelsey was saying, we've had quite a few questions about that.
Lots and lots of questions, and we'll continue answering those on the other side of the break.
Welcome back to Facts Not Fear. We're broadcasting on both KBMT, ABC, and KJAC NBC, as well as our social platforms, as we answer your questions tonight about the coronavirus.
Important to note here, you can text your questions to us. The number is 409-838-1212. Again, please text, no phone calls, no one is there to answer, and message rates do apply. Now, one of the big headlines we learned about this virus today is that US researchers have given a healthy volunteer the first shot of an experimental coronavirus vaccine. This milestone is just the first step in a really long process, and one of several underway all across the world.
Okay. Right now, we've got to get to a question about first responders. We've had several of those tonight. Shelley in Jefferson County wants to know what steps police and other first responders are taking to stop the spread of the coronavirus. What can they do? Is there anything we can do to help them?
I can answer that. The CDC has put out guidance for the various disciplines, particularly EMS and law enforcement. What we are doing locally is localizing that and putting implementation of those guidance in for our first responders.
For example?
With prepositioned PPE, which is protective equipment for, that follows the CDC guidelines. You can pull it up on the CDC or the Department of State Health Services website and see what those requirements are. We have prepositioned some of those things and how to take care of them, how to decontaminate if the officer doesn't have enough time to put on all the protective gear before making contact with somebody.
That's a good point.
And that's the City of Beaumont, so, yes.
At the county, we've made a strong request to the state for that PPE.
We've got a bunch of questions I want to roll through. April Inviter says, if you're out and there's only cold water available, is that as effective to wash your hands as the hot water, doctor?
Obviously, hot water's better because it's hot. I mean, but if you've got cold water and soap, I would still wash your hands with cold water and soap. And then you could always use a Germex or something like that.
If a person tests negative, can they then test positive for the virus? Can it switch that way?
Sure. Well, let's take the scenario, I just want to get tested. And you go and get tested and it's negative, and then three weeks later, now you have symptoms, and you come back and now you're positive, right? Were you positive at that negative, or you just got tested when you didn't have symptoms? So I would say in medicine, never say never.
And how long is someone contagious after they've had it?
Gosh, I'll have to get, I do not have that actual answer, but I can get it for you.
There you go. Those are just some of the questions we wanted to roll through right now. We're going to bring back the folks from Spindletop here in just a bit, as we try to work through some of the questions you have. They're addressing the mental component of all of this social distancing.
We have a few minutes left with our panel, as they continue answering your questions. And so we want to just jump right in, utilize all of our time with just six months out from Amelda. Many who moved in with families during home renovations are still living in really tight quarters. What advice do we have for them?
So we would really want to strongly advise them to practice the hygiene techniques that the CDC has recommended, washing hands, keeping surfaces clean. Also want to advise people that if they're feeling sick, they should see their healthcare provider. But we also, too, want to encourage people to get outside. Now it's a time to go outside, play with your kids, they're not going to be in school, so get some fresh air.
Dr. Minnie, a question for you. If mail carriers or package handlers happen to be infected or have been exposed, what about the packages that get delivered to your doorstep?
I would just say, after you open that package, wash your hands.
Keep your hands clean.
Keep your hands washed. That's the number one thing. I can't stress enough.
Mayor Ames, something that's very important that folks want to know. Do we have any cases, confirmed or presumptive, in Jefferson County or our region for that matter?
Well, we were talking about this earlier. The City of Beaumont doesn't, Jefferson County doesn't, Hardin County doesn't, Orange County doesn't, Jasper County doesn't, confirmed cases. When you say perceived, I mean, we are sending out tests. We talked about earlier, we have to send them out. So those are going out, but, so there could be some out now that we haven't gotten back yet, but that doesn't mean they're confirmed. The majority of people that have presented, we've seen that have the flu, but that doesn't mean you shouldn't get tested. You absolutely should. And if I could add one other little tidbit, if you're reading your news on Facebook, please make sure before you share it that it's coming from a source like the county's Facebook page or website, the city's, the health department, a hospital. The CDC. You could get so much information. That's one of the things that has been so difficult through this, is the misinformation that gets out there, because people are sharing things that are coming from friends or family. Not that, that's not fun, but it doesn't help us much.
Mayor and the rest of our panel, we thank you so much for coming in tonight, spending this hour with us. We're going to spend a little additional time on our 12 News Facebook and YouTube feeds right now, to try to get some more of your questions, as we work to spread facts and not fear.
Hello to our social media family. For the last hour, we've been talking to a panel of experts from all over southeast Texas, spreading facts and not fear, as we work to just understand what's happening with the coronavirus.
We've had so many questions come in, 409-838-1212. So many of you sharing those with us. We just finished our on-air broadcast, and we were just wrapping up, kind of reassuring folks that there are no confirmed coronavirus cases, no COVID-19 cases, in our immediate Jefferson, Orange, Hardin County area, and well into the Lakes area as well. Dr. Minnie, Gary Minnie from the Medical Center of Southeast Texas, you were explaining the process earlier, and it's a swab that gets sent off to Houston, and what, about a three-day delay to get the information?
Now, the newer swab coming out, I don't know how long that delay is going to be, the one that's now going through LabCorp and Quest. You've got to remember, the initial swab all had to go to the CDC, then, then it got to get to go to Houston, and there can be a delay because it's being sent, it's got to be processed. The newer swabs coming out, that will be allowed to be done through those two lab companies, it may be a quicker turnaround. Again, the thing is, it's so fluid. So what we tell you now, eight hours from now, can be completely different.
Okay. This isn't a question a lot of people like to talk about, a topic, I should say, but if someone passes away, they have the virus, are they contagious? Can they have a funeral? A lot of people ask this question.